All right, good evening and welcome to the September 13th meeting of the Escondido Planning Commission. If you'll please rise and I'd ask Rick to lead us in the flag salute.
[inaudible] To the flag of the United States of America, the Republic of which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Chair Barbe?
Present.
Commissioner Barber?
Here.
Commissioner Doan is absent. Commissioner Macaro?
Present.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes, present.
Commissioner Spear?
Present.
Commissioner Wyler?
Here.
Thank you. And review of last meeting's minutes, are there any comments or questions on the minutes from commissioners? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Second, okay. Did you catch? I think Commissioner Barber moved it and Commissioner Spear seconded. Roll call on that?
Chair Barbe?
I abstain, I wasn't here.
Commissioner Barber?
Yes.
Commissioner Macaro?
Approved.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Spear?
Approved.
Commissioner Wyler?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is five to zero to approve with one abstained.
Are there written communications?
Good evening Chair Barbe, Adam Finestone, Senior, excuse me, City Planner, I'm going back in my days. Yes, there are a couple pieces of written communication that have been provided on the dais. Two are letters related to item G2 on the, on tonight's agenda. And the third is a copy of the adopted bylaws that were approved last time at our meeting on the 23rd of August, I believe it was. So those have been modified slightly to address the, the changes that the commission had requested as part of the resolution and they're provided for you here. Once you read through, if there's anything you're, you're unsure about or you think that may have been put in there inaccurately based on the recommendations that were part of the resolution, please let me know and we can look at that again. That's all we got.
Okay, thank you. Oral communications? None at this time. All right, moving on to public hearings, the way we'll run this is we'll have a staff presentation and then the discussion or presentation, if applicants have anything to add, that would be fine. And then we'll discuss and then we'll pass a motion. Okay, so first, public hearing item is PL 21-0304, the appeal of a plot, plot plan approval. I assume there's a staff.
I'm sorry, Sean Nicholas, our principal planner, will be providing that presentation.
Okay, great. Hi Sean.
Hello and good evening Chair Commissioners. This item before you is PL 21-0304 for a project located at 1401 South Escondido Boulevard. The plot plan was approved for a 54-unit project located at 1401 which included a, which included six deed restricted affordable units. That approval occurred in last three, last quarter of August 2022. The applicant has appealed just a single condition of approval and that is associated with the payment for, of, payment for costs of ongoing municipal services. All other project components are approved and not subject to the, to appeal this evening. The image there is a rendering of the approved project. So, to give a commission a bit of background on the cost of municipal services, condition of approval, this was a discussion that was started by the city council back in 2019 with a goal to slow the structural budget deficit that the city of Escondido saw out on the horizon. In September 23rd, 2020, the city council restated its intent for developers, for developments to pay for their ongoing costs of providing municipal services and that this would be a requirement for all projects approved after May 13th, 2020. So what is the role of the planning commission this evening? Well, this item in particular is before the planning commission this evening because any appeal of a director's decision is first reviewed by the planning commission. But the planning commission cannot waive this requirement for funding of municipal services. Only city council can waive a fee. So, that being the case, the planning commission action this evening is a recommendation to the city council and staff encourages planning commission to make a recommendation to allow the project to move forward to council expeditiously. With that, staff does recommend that the planning commission recommend to city council denial of the appeal and upholding the director's decision to apply condition of approval, requiring the payment of ongoing costs for provisions of municipal services consistent with city council policy. With that, it concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to address any questions the commissioners may have.
I have questions.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, are there any questions from commissioners to staff?
When the developer submits their application for affordable housing and to get the bonus under state law, do they normally, do they normally initiate, when they initiate it, do they normally list what they were seeking in concessions or is that something that is provided later by, or is that something that's negotiated?
It's, it can be a bit of both, honestly Commissioner Barber. Sometimes it's clear what a, what a project may need in terms of a waiver or an incentive. Sometimes it gets developed over time as a project kind of comes together, something becomes clear that an additional incentive or waiver may be needed to make a project work. So it can happen in a variety of ways. Sometimes they know, as I said, coming in, so they can request it upfront.
We have, for example, does the city have like a menu of specific incentives or no, it's just all subject to them requesting or us requiring?
It's intentionally meant to be on a case-by-case basis to allow the applicant to determine and submit what it is that they need to make the project functional while providing the affordable housing.
And keep in mind that I'm new to the planning commission, I was not here when they adopted the CFD, so I'm a little bit in the weeds here and trying to clear the weeds. And I also understand we're not here really to discuss the pros and cons of a CFD, just how it's pertinent to this particular project. But I'd like a little information on it. What are the specific services that is going to be funded through the CFD on this project?
I think perhaps Assistant City Engineer Tunnel could best explain what the potential services that the CFD or the private funding mechanism that the applicant can set up because it is not one, it is one or the other, it's not necessarily required to be in through the CFD. But I'm sure Mr. Tunnel can describe what types of ongoing municipal services it provides funding for.
Yeah, I wasn't front center when, when this was being worked out, but I believe, you know, we looked at all city services, fire, police, public works, parks, and looked at what shortfalls, you know, what a, what a project generates in property taxes, sale taxes, you know, all the taxes that get generated, and then what it costs to serve those units, all types of city services. And so those were, those were the services. And I think if I recall, probably fire and police were probably the biggest shortfalls, but I don't have those numbers.
But when the owner of the apartment complex in this case pays on their taxes annually their, their CFD tax, is, are specific dollars earmarked for specific funds or does it just all go into the city's general fund?
I, I don't know the specifics. I, I believe it goes, goes to the general fund, yeah.
And again, I just want to make it clear that it isn't the, just the CFD isn't the only option. Again, the applicant can set up a private funding mechanism, so it's, it's either or, there's a choice there, it's not automatically into the CFD. And it is a function more of the public works. I was, I know that Mr. Tunnel was involved to some degree, but in terms of the function of what those costs and how those are, funds are laid out, that is more of a function of public works. But again, it has to do straight to, my understanding is to providing those types of services. It might go through the general fund, but it is distributed and meant for those types of improvements and ongoing maintenance.
Has the city estimated what those costs or what those taxes are going to be in the near future once this project is completed and occupied?
I can tell you roughly that it would be in the ballpark of approximately $43,000 a year, plus or minus. That's a, a very rough estimate, but meant to give you a ballpark number.
Has the city exercised any discretionary authority to waive the fees on any other affordable housing projects that have come before the city since the CFD was formed?
Again, that's not a function of staff, any waivers would have to go to city council. City council has waived fees in the past on other projects. I can't speak to how many of them were affordable housing projects, but again, that's a function of the city council. So it's not that staff has waived any fees, as we don't have the ability to do that.
I understand, but does staff know which projects the city council has waived fees?
So, since the CFD was established or the requirement to fund public services on an ongoing basis, the city council has waived that requirement for three projects that were in the pipeline prior to adoption of that, of that requirement, so.
And the justification was they were in the pipeline before, so they, you know.
Correct.
Out of curiosity, what was the date that this project entered the pipeline?
In 2021.
Okay.
Which would have been after the start date of May 13th, 2020, set forth by city council.
Okay. I'd like to ask the city attorney, the applicant in their appeal has noted when or, or when the city is restricted from being able to deny a request for a waiver, and I was wondering if you could respond to those, those three issues?
Sure. So, so just to be clear, state law does require that certain incentives or concessions be granted to developers of affordable housing projects. We've looked into the definition of concession or incentive in the government code, those two terms are used interchangeably. And the definition is such that a request for a waiver of the CFD, a fee requirement, doesn't fall into the definition of concession or incentive, it's actually a request for a financial incentive, which is a discretionary act, so it's not required by state density bonus law. I think this, there's a section that's actually quoted in the staff report that specifically states that, it's government code section 95915 subsection L, and it states that the state density bonus law does not limit or require the provision of direct financial incentives, including the waiver of fees or dedication requirements, so.
What, what is your response to the, the applicant, in fact, both applicants in both appeals today noted that California Government Code Section 65915 prohibits the city from denying the request for a waiver if, unless the city can in writing make a substantive, do you know where I'm going with this? Do you want to go ahead?
Well, I'm just, I think that's actually what I just answered, which is that that government code section doesn't reply to this request, which is for a waiver, waiver of a fee.
Okay, so not any one of those three circumstances mentioned?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. The city does obviously have the discretion to waive those, but it's not required to by state density bonus law.
I'm finished for now.
Other questions?
My question is about the lawsuit that's mentioned, that's currently filed, and that would probably be a question for you to answer. Because that isn't, hasn't come to trial and hasn't been debated, is this premature to charge this fee?
No, it's not. The city is quite confident that it will prevail in that lawsuit. The lawsuit was filed by the BAI, BIA, A, sorry, in February of 2021, I believe. It is a pending lawsuit, but it has been stayed and it's not clear exactly when there'll be a resolution of that lawsuit. But the city's quite confident that it will prevail and they, there's been no opinion from the judge otherwise. There's been no substantive opinion from the judge at all at this point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes, hi, I have a couple of questions. First, has staff reported or made a presentation or held a workshop to inform the planning commission on the CFD requirements in the past?
They were, that, they were adopted as part of council action, it was not presented, nor is it something that's under the purview of city, of the planning commission.
Right. I didn't think so, so you're, you're not the only one that hasn't been brought up to speed. And, and has the staff or the city council ever asked the planning commission's input on the CFD?
Again, it's something that's in the purview of council, so it's nothing that we would be presenting to this body. If I can kind of reiterate, I think something that, that principal planner Nicholas said during his presentation, the, the reason that we're here before you is that the municipal or the zoning code requires appeals of a director decision to be brought forth to planning commission. Had that not been in there, we would have gone straight to council with this.
Right, thank you. And then I have another generic question about the project in general, that we're used to seeing a presentation on the list of concessions, what the, what the requirements are for a project and what the applicant is proposing. And, and I kind of feel at a disadvantage here that you're asking us to make, to express our opinion on one term, one condition without knowing any of the rest of the conditions for the project.
Thank you Commissioner Paul. Attachment one of your staff report this evening is the administrative approval by staff. The project itself has been approved and all other components of the project is approved. They have just appealed the single item, so in terms of the other incentives and components of the project, it is in compliant with the zoning code and staff has been, is supportive of the project. And those incentives and those components of the project, again, are not purview of the planning commission this evening.
Right, could, they're not the purview. You were asking us to make an opinion on one of the conditions, so I think we should know what all of the, what were the, what were the concessions that the city's already made?
The concessions that were already made have to do with the height, and that's on page two of your staff report, under an item B analysis, that they were given a incentive associated with height and three sto, and, and number of stories. The zoning code allows 45 feet in three stories, they have been approved for 49 feet in four stories. And they have also requested and received approval for reduction in their open space, going from 300 square feet per unit required to 60 square feet.
Okay, great. And the underlying zoning is for how many units?
Thirty-six.
And, and this is approval for 54?
Yeah, so they get 36 based on the underlying zoning, and since they're providing six very low-income units, that is over 15% of those 36, and so they get a 50% increase, which is 18 units, which gets us from 36 plus 18 is how we get to 54.
Thank you. And, and so that, that's 50% more units than the city has planned in, in our general plan, correct?
It's consistent with density bonus law, yes.
Wow, okay, so is it 50% more than what the city planned in the general plan? Do we, do we, do we plan for 50% for density bonuses or do we plan for the underlying zoning?
Yes, it is an increase, but it is consistent with state law.
Thank you, okay. And then I have a very specific question. On page 33 of the staff report, there's some, I guess, photo simulations of what the building will look like?
Rendering.
Rendering, thank you. Do you have the presentation, could you put it on the screen?
I have a, I have an image there of the.
Oh, thank you.
Of the, one of the renderings and I have another rendering also available.
Great, so that one, actually that picture's perfect. So on the left, you see there's the three windows and you can see actually through the room and you can see out the three windows on the other side of the corner. And so that's, that's very close to this picture in the report. So looking at the floor plans, the court, the edges are 2B, I believe it is, and I don't see that there are windows on two sides of that unit. So I'm not sure how the rendering is different from the floor plan.
So it looks to me that perhaps it just wasn't updated from various iterations in terms of the floor plan and how the, how this rendering is. I can tell you that the project went through a variety of iterations to get to this point and to bringing it, other than the two incentives that they've requested into conformance, so that just might be, unfortunately, the renderings might not have been updated due to the costs of, to do so, but as it, as the floor plans were updated through the course of the project development.
So the floor plan is correct and this rendering is, is not what the building's gonna look like?
Again, based on the discretionary and the preliminary plans, I would point to, yes, the floor plans is being accurate, but again, these are preliminary drawings and subject to substantial conformance as part of the building plan check process, and that's fairly common, so I don't think staff can sit here and tell you that those windows won't be added during building plan check if it's something the applicant wishes to proceed with, and that would be something reviewed by staff under those substantial conformance reviews that are typical.
So, I'm not clear, so the applicant could build it either way and it would be okay?
No, what I'm saying is that the app, the plans shown before you are preliminary and part of the entitlement process, and as projects go from these more preliminary designs to more firm construction documents, oftentimes there are changes in components that are further, we'll say quote unquote flushed out in terms of design aspects, and as part of common practice and part of staff's review before building permit submittal is they'll submit a package for substantial conformance and staff will ensure that what does move forward into building plan check is consistent with the intent of the design and plans that are provided to planning commission this evening.
Sorry Sean, you lost me. Will it match the draw, the picture or will it match the floor plan? Or it could be either one or some combination thereof?
At this point, I can't say that, I don't have an answer for it. The applicant may be able to provide that, but the, the thing that I do want to just continue to go circle back to is that we're not here to look at the project per se and the architecture and the design, we're here specifically to look for a recommendation on that individual condition.
Yeah, but that's like asking me how many police officers we need based on murders and not any other kind of crime. I mean, this is part of the project?
We don't have a, we don't have an answer for you on the issue with regard to floor plan versus elevation.
Right, so but then it could be, so it could be either or or a combination?
We'll have to work that out during the, during the building plan review, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I think that's all my questions.
One more question regarding the money. There's also mentioned in the proponents' points of arguing the fee that we do have a 1% sales tax increase going up for debate. Is there any way that part of, if that does pass with the city of Escondido, that that could cover some of the CFD fund issues in this particular instance?
I think it's difficult for staff to make any kind of assumptions on, on that, any particular bill or proposition that's on the upcoming ballot, other than to say that it's, it's a three-quarter cent potential increase, that is before the citizens of Escondido, and again, I believe in the, was it in July, correct? Do you know which date exactly in July, Mr. Finestone?
Are you talking about when?
Or that, yeah, when they kind of laid that out?
Sometime in late July, I think maybe the 27th, 28th, the county, the city council voted to authorize putting that ballot measure, or that measure on the ballot. We don't know what the outcome of the election would, or the vote will be, and we don't know what the potential use of those funds as it relates to offsetting certain costs that are, that the funding mechanism that we're looking at here would hypothetically be covering. So it's almost, it's a really vague answer that we'd be able to give at this point.
Commissioner Macaro?
Yes.
Correct. And the reason I wanted to point out the, the late July, if you go back and look at the city council meeting and the agenda report for that, the finance department and the city manager laid out what potential items and things those could be related to, I just don't have that available to me right now.
And one more question on, on the same note, it was also mentioned that there might already be funds for this particular project in the general budget. That was mentioned in, in a comment letter, and I just want to make sure that I understand that correctly, that there isn't, not money already set out for this?
I don't know specifically what that reference would be to. I think that if, if this might be the accurate way that we're looking at it, the general fund currently subsidizes projects or properties for the provision of public, of public services to those properties. Should this project be approved and constructed without some sort of funding mechanism, it will further exacerbate the, the impact on the general fund to provide services. The goal at this point is to stop that impact or that, that exacerbation of the impact of the gen, on the general fund.
And I, and I think what you're referring to, I believe, is that there was a notation in there that because this is in the town, more in the middle of town, not on the outside of town, that there's already, you know, infrastructure and support, but I think City Planner Finestone said it well in the fact that right now there's a sing, old single-family residence that was determined not to be historic and a very small commercial center on site, and going to a 54-unit residential development is definitely an intensification and will then increase the cost of municipal services to that. So I would say, I don't think anyone here could necessarily describe the funds, but as you can see, it is an intensification that the, the funding mechanism is meant to offset in terms of those costs to the city.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Spear?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions or clarifications. I think it was, it was made clear that the intent of the council was referenced to in terms of the documents that were put forth. My question, in terms of consistency and fairness in relation to, and I think it's been mentioned, but in relation to other development application, applicants post the installation of this, of this CFD, with the exception of those that were in the pipeline that we discussed, is it fair to say that all others since the CFD have had this condition applied and been subject to it?
I would say that's an accurate statement.
Okay, thank you.
And keeping in mind that it's not only a CFD, it could be another funding mechanism and that was.
Or a private funding.
And that was the council's, city council's directive.
The city council did provide for an option with a private funding mechanism. Has any development taken advantage of that?
Commissioner Spear, no, the, anyone who has been going through the process has at this point opted to annex into the services CFD. No one has established their own, their own funding mechanism at this point, they haven't done the, there's, there's significant expense and time involved in doing that, and the, the CFD is, is intended to be a way to streamline that, that process and make that quicker. It's relying on fiscal impact analyses that have been conducted by consultant for the city, and that's how those numbers were, were derived.
Okay. In relation to this project, was there any discussion or desire by the applicant to pursue or, or, or offer a private funding mechanism? a private funding mechanism?
Staff talked with the applicant regarding what the requirement is, the condition of approval, as provided senior staff report this evening. That would probably be, in terms of how far they've gone with their exploration of those options, would be a good question for the applicant who is here and available for questions tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I had a follow-up to the question or point that Commissioner McCarroll was making when asking about the lawsuit. She received a response about the, our, our legal side's optimism that we'll win the lawsuit, but if I was not reading too much into Commissioner McCarroll's question, my reading was since we actually do not know what the final decisions are made on the lawsuit, would it be prudent to delay implementing their participation in the CFD until we have an actual decision made by the courts?
Well, I mean, we don't actually know when the court's going to make a decision or how that's going to play out. In terms of whether it's prudent or not, that's really not a question for, for legal counsel at this point.
Is it plausible to, to make that a condition if we chose to recommend that to the city council?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm not 100% sure what your.
Okay, so the proposal, I mean, what was approved administratively is that they will participate in the CFD. They're appealing that they prefer not to participate in the CFD. I'm asking, could the condition be modified that you will participate in the CFD if the judge rules in favor of the city? And we withhold actually requiring them to start to participate in the CFD until we get a legal decision?
I would point back to the fact that this is a recommendation this evening to city council. That's definitely within the purview. If the commission wants to modify its recommendation to the city council, you can. But again, I would say that staff and I would wager the applicant is though strongly encouraging and requesting some kind of recommendation this evening and want some form or fashion to city council so they can proceed forward.
Okay. Commissioner Spear?
Another follow-up question. In reference outside of the city of Escondido, are you familiar with how other jurisdictions in our area are requiring or not requiring CFDs similar to the way we are?
Again, staff can't speak to other communities. All I can tell you is that this is the requirement and the city council adopted policy.
Okay, other. Commissioner Wyler?
Normally, I pose a bunch of questions to staff, but based on the diligence of my fellow planning commissioners, you guys have covered all the questions that I actually do have. So I, I'll save any further comment until planning commission discussion.
Okay. Anything else? All right. I do have some comments, but also I'll, mine are more sort of overriding and I'll hold those until we have our discussion. But the question here would be, does the appellant have a comments or a presentation at all? Oh, sorry, you guys.
Yes, the applicant for the project and the appellant has submitted a PowerPoint. And I believe they are prepared to go through that for the commission.
Great. Thank you so much for coming.
I hope everybody likes PowerPoints. So just before jumping in, my name is Greg Drakos with Cross Real Estate Investors. Thank you very much for being here this evening. Commissioners, Chair, Vice Chair, thank you for your time. I wanted to answer a few of the questions or at least explore a few of the questions that were asked during that, that last comment period or question period. So in terms of incentives, to be very clear, we're requesting height, four feet in additional height above and beyond what is the underlying zoning. We're, as you heard from Principal Planner Nicholas, we're also requesting reduced open space. So. In terms of the renderings and the windows, so the, the renderings to, to Principal Planner Nicholas's point, the renderings do not get updated every time we update the drawings. And as we go through the iterations with the construction documents, we explore the project, things are changing structurally in the building and we're looking at spans and openings. So that dictates a lot of ultimately, you know, where the windows, openings are. There's mechanical, electrical plumbing raceways and things throughout the building. So that drives a lot of it, whereas, and that will ultimately be shown in the, in the building elevations, but are not captured in a lot of the renderings, which are kind of just pretty looking pictures. So. I just want to point out, there was a question about, or a comment, I believe, from city planner Finestone that we, these projects would exacerbate issues with the general fund. And I'm paraphrasing this. However, five to 10 minutes prior to that, we can't define exactly what the CFD is covering. So how do we know, right? How do we know if we're exacerbating issues? What does the CFD actually pay for? To comment on the BIA lawsuit, and I'm probably stepping a little bit out of bounds here, but the reason it's been stayed is because they're waiting to see what happens with the vote, not because the BIA feels, or the city for that matter, feels as though one or the other have an upper hand in, in winning the lawsuit. All other projects that have CFD that have been mentioned by staff, that are referenced in the staff report, that have been approved and where they have annexed in with the CFD since May of 2020 are for sale projects. And I want you to keep that in mind because that's a very important point as we get into the presentation. And there's a big difference between the CFD application on a multifamily project, specifically a workforce housing project with very low affordable units, very low income affordable units, and a for-sale project where the cost of the CFD is simply passed along to a consumer and the buyer of the home who then finds it on their tax bill and wonders what it's for and what it is. Whereas, you know, the developer in that case, or ultimately the owner, is long gone. The cost of forming separate funding, the question was asked whether we have looked into that. The answer is yes. We've talked about it with staff, albeit we didn't push too hard or pursue it very far until we were able to come to this hearing and ultimately present to city council, yourselves as well as city council. So that's sort of on hold from, from our perspective, but it is a significant cost to form a private version of the CFD, especially on a project that's not particularly large. Is not a huge amount of, amount of budget for that. And then lastly, the question was asked about other cities, do other cities in the, the area or in the region here have a CFD? The answer is no. We actively have projects in Vista and San Marcos. And at least to our knowledge, and we think we're, we're pretty far along with them. We have not heard or known or been, you know, made aware of any CFD in these other jurisdictions. With that, Sean, if you wouldn't mind, just jumping to the next slide here. So I, I want to go, the, the staff report really covered the CFD going back to 2020. 2019, 2020, of when city council asked staff to explore expanding the CFD mechanism. But I want to go back to the history of this, where this actually started. And this is sort of one of those things that I think we've all seen throughout our lives where it's, in some ways, it's easy to put a tax in place. It's very difficult to repeal it, right? Once it's in place, it's, it's there and everyone sort of includes it in the budget. And, you know, a lot of folks, as in this case, aren't quite sure where it came from or what it's for, but it's pretty sticky. So let's go back to the beginning. Sean, next slide, please. So there are three main projects, really two main projects that started the CFD, that started down this road. The first one being in 2000. I'm sure many folks here, local residents are familiar with Hidden Trails. The project was in 2000, single-family home project, very much a greenfield development. 291 single-family homes across 178 acres. The second one, 2006, Eureka Ranch, just to the north of Hidden Trails. Single, again, single-family homes, greenfield development, 290 homes, 107 acres. And then more recently in 2020, the project that's ongoing is Lennar Project. It's on the former Escondido Golf Course site. Known as the villages, otherwise Canopy Grove. It's 380 homes and 120 acres. So all told, 961 single-family homes, 405 acres. These are very large projects, master plan projects, all for sale, all single-family and all greenfield development. We would consider the redevelopment of a golf course to, to fall into that. And this, by the way, is from the city's website, which is linked here as a source for Community Facilities District. So it goes through, the city's website actually goes through this chronology. Next slide, please, Sean. So this just provides a sense of where these projects are located. As you can see, the two on the right were the genesis, Hidden Trails and Eureka Ranch, were really the genesis of, of the CFD. They're very much in the eastern portion of the city. In fact, Hidden Trails is, as we'll see in the next few slides, is you know, more or less built into some pretty significant grades and kind of a mountainside there. Next slide, please. So this is a closer look at Hidden Trails, again, 2006, built in 2006. I'm sorry, this should be 2000. 290 homes, 107 acres, greenfield development, obviously requiring massive infrastructure. I mean, this was truly raw land when, when the project was started. And of course, because of its distance from downtown and difference, distance from services, it commands a pretty high level of services and cost of those services. You can see, in fact, in the photo, kind of just to the left of where the G is in Greenfield, you've got substantial water tanks and infrastructure for this project. This is a large-scale master plan community. This was the first CFD. Next slide, Sean. The second project just to the north of this, you can see in the upper left there, the little red dot kind of gives you an indication of where it is on the map, but built in '06, 290 units, 107 acres, has a park, big-time infrastructure, again, outside of town or on the edges of town, high service demand. Next slide, Sean, please. The most recent project that I'm sure everyone is pretty familiar with, Canopy Grove, even larger, 380 homes, 120 acres. Huge infrastructure, primarily not so much that it's as far out of town as the others, but it's, it's sprawling throughout. I mean, it follows a former golf course route, so it's sort of sprawling throughout this, this area. So there's a lot of new infrastructure that's been required, very high service demand for this project. Next slide, please, Sean. So that little red star on this map that you can see, that's us. That's our project. We're, I don't know, walking distance, handful, maybe a mile or so from downtown. We're not on the outskirts of town. We're an infill project distinctively. And we'll see, next slide, please, Sean. If we look at our project in comparison to these projects that really started the CFD, we're, we're less than 0.3% of the size of these CFD projects. This is the difference. We're a rental project, it's workforce housing, six very low-income affordable units. We're infill, 54 units as opposed to the nearly 1,000 units of these projects. And we're just over an acre as opposed to 400-plus acres. The reason I want to show this is because it's important to understand, truly understand the history of this CFD and the genesis of where this came from. And then obviously go into the impact and what this means if this stays, not for only for our project, but for the next project you're going to hear about tonight and several, several others that I'm aware of in the community that haven't quite hit the staff yet. Next project, or next slide, Sean. So as Sean mentioned, we're, our project is, is per the zoning, per the underlying zoning. It's ministerial. That's obviously why, why this body has not seen it. It's replacing blight. It's again, 48 workforce units, six very low-income units. It's not a Class A project with swimming pools and all kinds of amenities. It's designed for workforce. And when we say workforce, we mean, you know, teachers, firefighters, police officers, you know, that type of workforce. Plus six deed-restricted, very low-income units. Again, infill development and it's surrounded by existing infrastructure. Matter of fact, there's so much infrastructure immediately adjacent to the project that our offsites, pleasantly for us, other than some minor offsite work that we need to do, the streetlights at the intersection and changing some curb radiuses, there is no other offsite requirements. No stormwater, no, you know, everything is there. Everything is at the project. That's how little impact there is on the infrastructure. So next slide, please, Sean. So let, let's talk economic feasibility. What, what does the CFD that came from these large-scale master plan communities mean for a project like this, that is relatively small project? What we're facing, sorry, Sean, next slide. So what we're facing, since we started this project in January 2021, you can see to the right-hand side, just before construction costs have gone vertical. So we're facing enormously increased construction costs. And I would ask, how many people here have or run a small business in this town? Everybody knows, I mean, we saw today in the inflation print numbers. Everybody knows the impact and has been, you know, subject to the impact, whether it be through food or fuel prices of these rising costs. So now we have a project, a ministerial project that we started about 18 months ago that during that time, our costs are up over 30%. Next slide. In the same period of time, we've seen financing costs increase over 100%. These are our costs. These are the construction loans. These are the costs that we need to be able to finance and execute these projects. How many people here work in any sort of financial services? I mean, anyone here who works in mortgage banking, works for a local bank, a larger bank, knows and has seen the impact of this every day. Next slide, please. So let's talk about this project. Regardless of the CFD, this project will pay nearly $2 million in impact fees. Development impact fees, regardless. Currently today, the, the property owner who's here pays approximately $3,000 a year in property taxes. When all said and done, through a tax study, this is not our estimate, this is a professional tax firm that puts together property tax studies for us, we will be paying over $240,000 a year in property taxes. The ongoing cost of services, the CFD for this project, as Sean mentioned, is roughly 40, 45,000. When it's all said and done, say you're somewhere between 40 to $50,000. On the next slide here, I want to wa, I want to walk you through what that means in terms of a project's feasibility for a multifamily project. Keep in mind, $3,000 in property taxes today, $240,000 in property taxes if this project gets built. The CFD has a real, real impact on the feasibility of actually getting this built. This is real. These numbers are illustrative, but it's the same thing. So what we're looking at here on the left-hand side of your screen is a project with no CFD. So let's assume the project costs a million dollars. You get a loan for $800,000. It's a 6% interest rate and you have a $48,000 loan payment. The project does $100,000 a year in rent. It has $50,000 in operating expenses. So you're left with $50,000 in income. After you pay the bank back every year, you're left with $2,000 in net income. This will show you how tight it is in these operating costs. Now, on the right-hand side with the CFD, simply add in an additional $10,000 cost to this project a year and it's dead in the water. Can't be financed. No one's going to provide equity, no debt, can happen. So this CFD, if we go back to the previous slide, Sean, if you wouldn't mind just going back one. This CFD will add 40 to $50,000 in operating costs for this project that is on a razor's edge of feasibility due to increased construction costs during the time we've been going through a ministerial approval and increased financing costs. This won't happen. $2 million in development impact fees won't be paid. $240,000 in income taxes or in property taxes won't be paid. Jump ahead two. So I want to talk a little bit about where does California stand? Like, let's look at this. Where does California stand in the world in terms of our housing needs? Number one, we're 49th out of 50 states with regard to housing units per capita. That means North Dakota and Alaska are ahead of us. Jump back one, Sean. North Dakota and Alaska are ahead of us in terms of the number of housing units they have per capita. Can anyone guess what state is behind us? Who has less houses per number of people than we do? Utah. Utah's the only other state that actually has less housing per capita than California. Next slide, please. That said, California has the largest total housing deficit in the United States. We have the largest amount of housing units that are needed. We have the largest population, obviously, of any state. But we have the largest number of housing. obviously, of any state, but we have the largest number of housing units that are These types of challenges, things like the CFD, or CEQA, or other challenges that come into play, are a big part of the reason, you know, that we have such a deficit. And then, next slide, please, Sean. So in looking through the recently published six-cycle draft housing element update from, you know, for 2021 to 2029 for the city of Escondido, these are the RENA numbers, and we all have our feelings about the RENA numbers, quite frankly. But the punchline is Escondido needs over 9,000 housing units, right, over the next decade. We're talking about 54, right? There's a drop in the bucket. And we're talking about 54 being prevented by, in my mind, economically is a $40,000 today, you know, trading another $200,000 on net for the property taxes. It seems relatively insignificant. I wouldn't classify this as exacerbating, an infill project, as exacerbating the city of Escondido's services cost. Next slide, please, Sean. As we've talked about, the city is already in litigation with the BIA over the CFD, and, again, which has been stayed pending the outcome of the vote regarding the 3/4% sales tax increase. Next slide. And I'm sure everyone here is aware of the state taking pretty aggressive enforcement action against any jurisdictions that are preventing affordable housing from happening. This is a headline from the Attorney General's Office regarding what just recently happened in Encinitas. And of course, I'm sure everyone is aware, the state Attorney General has formed a housing task force specifically for these reasons. Now, that all being said, I think we'd like to outline what is, what we think at least is a very clear solution in terms of a path forward and how this can be resolved, and ultimately, we can proceed with what we think is a great project for the city, and ultimately, you know, the city will realize those fees and the impacts from the project. So I'll hand it over to Andrea to take it from here.
Sure. Yeah, it's a bit easier.
Hi, good evening. My name is Andrea Contreras, and I'm a land use attorney here in San Diego. I represent Cross Real Estate, and I represent a number of others, a number of other developers like him throughout Southern California. I can also tell you that I've never seen a CFD like this before. CFDs are usually established for particular developments in order to take care of whatever public services are needed. Annexing a for-rent project into a CFD is not something I've ever seen before. And I think, I think because it's messy, and it's complicated, and we have problems like we're showing you today. Due respect to the city attorney, but we disagree. The state density bonus law does allow for what we're asking for today, and to be specific, we're asking the planning commission to recommend to the city council that they waive the CFD requirement for this plot plan. What the state, state density bonus law requires is that unless the city can make a finding, finding based on substantial evidence, that the concession does not result in actual cost reductions, that the concession would have adverse impact of public health, or the concession would be contrary to state law, then the city really must provide the developer with the concession they're requesting. And the concession we're requesting is to have the CFD not be applied to our project. You know, California law encourages affordable housing projects by entitling them to a wide range of incentives and waivers and concessions, because we need affordable housing, and development is expensive. Next slide, please. The Escondido municipal code also allows for this, and I've cited two sections here. I think I also put that in my, in my letter. Next slide, please. There have been two recent lawsuits where courts have specifically put the burden on cities to provide substantial evidence that the concession does not result in an identifiable and actual cost reduction. The one, the one we've cited here is Schreiber versus City of Los Angeles, that was in 2021. We discussed that in our letter, and the court was very clear about that. That decision was recently, recently affirmed by the Court of Appeal here in San Diego for a project, and it said the exact same thing and supported that result. That case is called Bankers Hill 150 versus City of San Diego, and that can be found at 74 Calap Fifth, 755. Wait, I just have one more. Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to say one, I wanted to add one more thing regarding the CF, or excuse me, the BIA lawsuit. You know, I think it's been said before, but, you know, again, with due respect to the city attorney, the lawsuit isn't stayed because people ran out of steam. The lawsuit's been stayed because of the vote that's coming up over the sales tax, and it's expected that that's going to, you know, no one has the numbers, but that's going to do something to resolve the costs. You know, this seems like a fairer way of handling these costs, rather than making affordable and workforce housing bear the brunt of market-rate housing. The city allowed, I don't know, maybe 1,000 market units to go through not applying the CFD. Those are all market-rate. And what, what this decision will be doing is it will be requiring affordable and workforce housing to bear the brunt of all these brand-new developments. And in response to Commissioner Barber's question, I think, yes, it would be prudent for the city to wait until the lawsuit is resolved. And I'm going to turn it back over to Greg. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. So just in summary, a couple of final points, and again, apologies for the long PowerPoint here, nobody likes a PowerPoint. The CFD was created for large-scale projects, we saw that, you know, that's really the genesis of the CFD, and I don't, I don't disagree with the CFD, or otherwise known as a Mel Ruse in those projects. They're very common, and they're always passed through, of course, to the homeowners. It's a perfectly viable and useful and well-trodden, known solution for large-scale projects with massive infrastructure. Again, they're not designed to be applied to infill workforce, multifamily-type projects. It will make this project infeasible. This is our biggest concern. We've been, we've been working at this, you know, we've got quite a bit of skin in the game here, and working on this for almost two years, you know, over 18 months now on this project. And to get to this point, it's, it's challenging, to say the least, for us. The state and the city are already housing-constrained. I mean, this is obvious, we all know it, we hear about it all the time in the news, we see housing prices, so on and so forth. This is part, these are the types of things that are exacerbating that problem. But there is an easy solution, and there is clear precedent for a solution here. So I've been a planning commissioner, I was on the planning commission for the city of Encinitas from 2015 to 2018, when the housing element was being pushed through. I understand the challenging position that you're in, one, to make a decision on something that you haven't seen before, on a project you haven't seen before, on something that we're not sure what it's for. But this is one of those situations where I sort of look at it and say, there's really two fundamental choices. One is, do we, do we want housing or not? And what are we going to do to make that feasible? You know, that's sort of the first thing. And the second thing is, I've read through the staff report, I've read through hundreds of staff reports as a planning commissioner, and I get it, everyone's busy, you look at a staff report, and it's kind of like, okay, what are staff recommending? Is there any other public comment? Anyone upset about this? You know, looking at it, but I wanted to give this presentation and take this time because this is a big, this is a big issue that goes beyond, well beyond, this project. So I really wanted to illustrate where this came from, what it's about, what the impact is. So it's not a decision, you have the power to make a recommendation, obviously, as you know, that is different than that of what staff's recommending. In the staff report, staff's recommendation is based upon what city council has said in the past. It is not based upon the logic, and the background, and the history, and the feasibility of what we've presented. So we would humbly ask and request that you make the recommendation to city council to uphold our appeal. Thank you very much for your time, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, that was very thorough, and also presented us with some, perhaps some more education about the history of the CFD. Commissioner Wyler, so this is a time where we'll be asking you all for clarifying questions.
Yeah, and thank you for the presentation, it was really informative to hear from you and the process that you go through. I understand that as well, and it's not easy, to say the least, and I certainly understand that. I only have one minor, minor question. What are the rents anticipated?
So the rents anticipated for the very low-income unit, their units, they're established by HUD, you know, and ultimately through the HCD locally. I believe, off the top of my head, they're roughly, I think the one-bedroom units are around $1,000 or $1,100 a month, and then the two-bedroom units are around $1,300 a month. And then the other workforce units, our goal is to, our stated goal is to keep those units anywhere from $150 to $250 below whatever the other market-rate rents are at the time we come to market, if that makes sense. So for example, if competing project is pricing themselves, and they're the three big ones that were just purchased, Haven 76, Rowan, and Alcove, they were around, somewhere around, call it, you know, $2,600, $100 for a one-bedroom unit. So our goal is to come in, say, $2,300 to $2,400. So we're, you know, $200-ish dollars below the competitor product.
I don't know, $2,200 to $2,500 a unit.
Yeah, somewhere, somewhere in that range.
Depending what the market will bear, and I get it, you're trying to, you're trying to undercut, just purely because, yeah, it's, it's a workforce housing, I've seen what the design is, there are amenities there, but it's not over the top. This does not look like it's one of those, it's not a Rowan.
Right.
It's just not. I mean, you can just see.
Yeah, the Palomar Heights project, for example, that will be a very.
That's a high-end.
Class A, you know, yeah.
Okay, I get it. All right, thank you.
Other questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Spear.
Again, thank you for your presentation, appreciate that, and for what you're trying to do. My question, one of the questions I have is in relation to the, the burden. In terms of affordability, one of the things you characterized was that this is razor's edge, that this really does put it in dangerous territory in terms of profitability. Help me understand, and us understand, how the additional units that are provided as an incentive do not offset substantially for the CFD burden?
Sure. So the way to think about that with the additional units, there's two components here. Number one, the additional units cost the same to build as the market-rate units. So what's really happening in density bonus, to be very clear, so I'm going to build two identical buildings, or two, let's say, EDUs, or two units next to each other, but one, I can't, I can charge a maximum of $1,100 a month for. So the other one, I have to charge more rent for to subsidize this low rent. So what's really happening with density bonus and rent control and affordable housing is, you're subsidizing the affordable housing by charging everyone who doesn't hit the income standards of affordable housing, you're charging them more. So this missing middle we talk about in housing is getting obliterated by these policies. And everyone, it sounds good on paper, they sound great, right? But at the end of the day, it's like, hey, let's get more affordable housing, we're going to give you more units, that sounds great. But really, the first thing is, all of the rents on those other units have to pay to subsidize affordable units. So that's one. The second part is, land costs what it costs. There are many projects we see, where, when you're looking at these projects, you do, you run what's called a land residual. So you say, okay, it's cost this much to build and this much to operate, we're going to back into what we can pay for the land. There are many projects we see that someone would have to pay us to take the land, because the projects are so expensive. So adding, getting additional units, the 50% density bonus, really only does one thing. It either, A, allows you to pay more for the land, or allows you to pay anything for the land, quite frankly. So if you want to know, this is kind of an interesting, fun fact here, so you may have seen an article where the city of San Francisco just announced that it's going to cost them $1 million a unit to build affordable housing. That's the cost to the city of San Francisco to do that. It costs us about $400,000 to $425,000 to build a single unit of housing, all-in, that's everything, land, building costs, fees, architecture, the whole thing. That's how much it costs. The impact fees are anywhere from 10% to 20% of that cost. And all of that cost, if, if I'm articulating this correctly, for those additional units that must be built, the affordable units, must be subsidized by the other units, by the market-rate units. So this is actually driving up, it's obliterating the middle market housing, and it's actually driving up a lot of the cost of housing, shockingly, so.
Another question I have is in relation to, you mentioned the, and this is, this is for, for the attorney, I suppose, but you mentioned that, a couple of things, one, that you're not familiar with, any other jurisdictions that have anything similar in CFDs, I believe. Is that, is that correct?
I don't need those for that. My experience is that, you know, CFDs are used for a development. So they are created for a development, a for-sale development, in order to offset the public services and the public infrastructure. This CFD is a city, is a citywide CFD, and the requirement is that every single residential development be annexed into it. It's unusual, and it's particularly unusual, I have no experience with for-rent projects being annexed into CFDs.
One other question I have is, you mentioned that the other comparative CFD projects within the city all were for-sale projects. How is this going to be not a for-sale project? What is the assurance that that's the case?
In order for, so, a couple of things. One, in order for us to make it a for-sale project, we would have had submitted, or would need to submit a condo map, right, to legally parcel out, create separate APNs for all the units, create an HOA, so on and so forth. That is not our intention, we do not develop for-sale housing, we are a multifamily rental housing developer. So you would know, in effect, I don't know if that's a discretionary action or not, but you would know, and staff would certainly know, if we were to file that, to turn it into a condo project. Quite frankly, what's going on in the for-sale market right now with interest rates and mortgage rates, that wouldn't be a very prudent move on our part. But our intent is to own and operate this as a multifamily project, and that is what we are being approved for.
So you're speaking to individual sale of individual units, but in terms of the entire project, that is, could be a for-sale situation?
Oh, sure. So we could certainly sell the building in its entirety, but the CFD impact is, is different in the sense that, as a developer and as an owner of the building, whether it's us or somebody else, we pay it, right? We don't pass it on, we can't pass it on to the tenants, certainly not in the case of affordable, because we're, it's rent-controlled. Whereas the point that I was simply making is that, on these large-scale master plan communities where the CFDs or Mel Ruses are more traditional, the developer doesn't really care at the end of the day, because that simply just gets passed on to the people that buy. that buy the home, and they're the ones paying it. The developer has no skin in the game at that point. So, it's a very different, you know, financial mechanism.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the appellant? Commissioner?
I do have a follow-up question, and it kind of goes off of Commissioner Spears' line of questioning. The, and maybe this is to staff, but the payment of the CFD, do the affordable, are the affordable units a part of that payment at the same rate as the market rate units?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay. I think that closes that portion of our public hearing, so are there public, is there public comment at this time?
Yes, we do have a public comment from Tim Hutt, I believe.
Good evening. This one?
You have three minutes to...
Thank you. Briefly, my name is Tim Hutter, I'm an attorney at Allen Mattkins. Full disclosure, I represent the applicant appellant on the next item. But what I heard, and what I wanted to offer in support of Andrea and in support of this applicant, and also just for clarity on the question that Mr. Barber asked earlier, Commissioner Barber, part of the, what we see as the contrast between the city attorney's opinion about density bonus law in this instance, and the two appellants' opinions in this instance, is whether or not this falls into the category of an incentive for which you, the city, need to make written findings in order to deny it. And what you heard from the city attorney is, no, it falls outside of that category, the written findings requirement can be set off to the side. We think it is something else. Obviously, we disagree with that as well, but one of the things I wanted to bring to your attention is another component of state density bonus law, it is government code 65915, that says specifically that that code section needs to be interpreted liberally in favor of the production of housing, right? So, if it's a close call, we are all obligated, and the state law says, if it's a close call, you need to interpret this in favor of housing and not in favor of a city that wants to charge a fee, right? So, I know that the discussion that you guys are having now is going to be very critical, and hopefully, our discussion on our item and the next one will be probably shorter. So, I wanted to at least give you that information and make it available to you so that you could have the discussion. I apologize, Andrea, but I did, I couldn't resist, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, please, sir, if you state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Glenn Schneep. My family owns the lot that this project is going to be developed upon. We spent a lot of years trying to get this property to a point where it could be marketable, dealt with the state over the water issues, two million dollars down the line cleaning up an old gas station spill, and then I spent several years arguing with the city. It seems like I'm going to be at this microphone, I'm always ranting and raving about something, but my building on the property was deemed historic, and I didn't think it was, and spent thousands of dollars with studies that did prove that it was not historic. So, again, this new, this thing looks like another one of these one-size-fits-all things, let's just lump everything together, let's make everything built after 1970 historic, or let's just make every project subject to this new tax. Selfishly speaking, I just want to close escrow on this, and I would love to see their petition, their waiver go through, so that we can speed this along. Escondido here, I mean, if you want housing, you've got to create an environment that is not so hostile here towards developers or whatever. I'm just a simple guy in the street here. My family came here a hundred years ago and developed orchards and developed businesses, and so this is just, we'd like to carry on with our, you know, having housing for people here in Escondido and moving on. So, I recommend that you guys recommend that the waiver go through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Any other speakers? No? All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing aspect of this appeal, and we'll go to commissioner discussion.
I would like the deputy to clarify again, the response to the restrictions they're suggesting that the city has to deny the request, and also the Shriver versus Los Angeles Court decision.
Sure. So, I actually agree with about 98% of what Ms. Contreras stated in her analysis, and I think Mr. Hutter also succinctly kind of pointed to what our difference is, and that is, state density bonus law, we're in agreement that it does allow the city to waive this, absolutely, there's no question. The difference really is that, in our opinion, the state density bonus law does not require the city to waive this, and that's stated in the, as I pointed out before, it's in the staff report, we've quoted the section where it specifically states that waiver of fees is not the same as a concession, and that's the difference.
Thank you. I'll hold on commenting later.
Okay. Other thoughts, comments?
I mean, if I may follow up on that, so, with that in mind, and as far as the financial waiver, so we, the city may, and it's at their discretion whether or not they waive that, as opposed to other development standards, that the city must waive those.
Correct.
Is that the inherent difference?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So, the density, the density law enable, allows for some flexibility, is what I'm hearing?
Yes, and there are certain, if there are certain concessions that are requested, those are required, the city is required to grant those concessions, and it is absolutely allowed to grant this waiver as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Paul?
Thank you. Yeah, so, I see the issue of concessions as things like the 45 feet versus 49 feet. That's an arbitrary number that the city has put on there, but I don't see concessions like, we have a standard for how many gallons of water per dwelling unit and things like that. That's an engineered number, and we're not going to say, you only have to, you can only shower on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we're going to give you less water. I mean, that's not a concession that's reasonable to make. And I'm very sympathetic to an applicant who doesn't want to pay more tax than their neighbor does. I'm super sympathetic to that. But in this particular case, we're giving a 50% density bonus, and we don't have any provision for how we're going to pay for that, that water, or how we're going to pay for this, the increase in the sewer, the increase in traffic, the increase in, you know, how many kids go to school. All of those things are going to go up 50%, and there has to be some mechanism to pay for that. So, as much as I'd like to support the appellant, I can't, I can't do that in this, in this particular case. Thank you.
Commissioner Spear?
So, on that point, I would, one of the things that I'm looking at is, fair's fair, right? Are we saying, certainly we do have the issue that you bring up, which is, how do we pay for city services that we're providing? And who should pay for that? But I think what's been mentioned is that we are providing two-tiered burden. There are those that do not pay for these additional services, and there are those that have an additional burden to do so. So, that's one distinction I think that's been made. The other, the other question I have is in relation to, I don't see, if I understand correctly, for the CFD, a study was performed by the city, is that correct, to determine what the impacts are, and what of essentially developments, what their impact was on city services, but there's no tie to individual developments and how they may have more or less impact on the city. It's a one-size-fits-all, as was mentioned. So, in terms, in terms of the fairness, that's where I say, you know, there's been a presentation saying, hey, look, we've got large communities of people on the outskirts, and we have a small group that's already in the infrastructure portion of the city. So, we don't have any distinction between the burden to any new applicants, everyone pays the same. All the newcomers essentially are paying the same burden, is that correct?
If I may, Commissioner Spear, there actually were, actually, I think they studied five housing types, and so, right now, there are four different yearly rates based on different housing densities, and so, there are, there is not one-size-fits-all, there's currently four.
Okay. And I have a question for staff. Isn't the point of the developer impact fees for traffic mitigation, for sewer, for water, for schools, don't, isn't that when we calculate and make the appropriate charges to address the impact the project has on those services? And isn't the CFD actually primarily just to care for ongoing services that we're finding a shortfall in our general fund to finance such as police, fire, and parks and recreation?
Thank you, Commissioner Barber. Two comments, I think, to answer that. I think you very accurately described many of the types of development impact fees that we have in the community, but I will tell you, though, several of those that you listed don't actually come to the city. Those go to outside agencies to provide services to the city. So, they're not coming here to help offset those costs. Secondly, I would say that you're correct in the second half in that, yes, some fees help to, in essence, pay a fee or a portion of that, but I believe, as Mr. Tunnel indicated, as part of the studies that they've done over the course, over the course of the years in evaluating this issue, is that there is a deficit or a delta that the cost to provide services to those developments is more than what we're taking in. Does that answer it? So, the CFD or the private financing option to applicants is meant to bridge that distance in terms of providing fire, police, other types of local municipal services?
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Weir?
No, I don't have any other questions. I've got, I've got comments about what we are trying to decide upon this evening. So, as a planning commission, it's our job truly, in an overreaching, global way, is to look at, implement the goals and policies set by the city council. So, one of the things that's been set and approved by the city council is implementation of the CFD. That's set by them. It's our job to implement that. So, what we're being asked to do tonight is to go, by the applicant, to disregard that goal entirely, which is our purview, we can do that. You know, it's a recommendation, and then the city can, council can do what it is that they do. I'm certainly sympathetic to the, to the development community, because the development community gets hit with layer upon layer upon layer upon layer of various financial burdens, costs, and requirements in order to get something through the system, and it's expensive. And all of that is getting passed on to the future renters, in this particular case. That's why rent's going through the roof. I mean, that's just a fact of life. So, it becomes really difficult, when we're placed in this position, to implement the goals and the policies set by city council, the CFD being one of them, and then to try and hold housing costs as much as we can to a sustainable level. And that's really tough. However, the one thing that has not come to this body was the CFD. We did not have the opportunity to review it, to scrutinize it, to see if it was appropriate, if it was proportionate. Did it, did it hit all the things that we think it should hit from a land use perspective? We never saw it. So, how are we supposed to say, no, you should disregard it because, for all the various reasons that were brought forth by the applicant or the appellant? And I get it, I certainly sympathize for this. But we never had the opportunity to see what the CFD really says unless we did our own research, but we didn't have a chance as a body here, or the prior body, to scrutinize that. That was put, the burden of that was put at the city council. So, I'm having a real tough time even accepting, making a recommendation to city council that we accept the appellant's case. I can't, I can't make that leap, as sympathetic as I am to all of these costs, and I truly am, but I can't make that leap. So, that's just my comments, that's my feelings, and I wanted to express that not only to the audience, but also to my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Paul?
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, that's why I said early at the beginning of the meeting that no one has ever asked our opinion before, so we're on, we're breaking ground here tonight, and that's why I wanted to point out that I am sympathetic to the appellant. There was one thing, but there was one item I forgot to mention earlier, and that is in the findings. And because we're increasing the density by 50%, I believe that one of these, one of these findings was, the concession or incentive would have a specific adverse impact, impact upon public health and safety, and frankly, I can, I can make that finding.
I'm sorry, I missed the end of that. Frankly, what?
I can make that finding personally. If we're increasing the density and we have no method to pay for that, then that's going to be detrimental to public health and safety.
I would agree with that as well. Commissioner Spear, did you have something?
Well, I appreciate all those comments, and I struggle as well, because I, you know, it is certainly, as Commissioner Wyler said, it is our responsibility to, not to set policy, but to make recommendations consistent with the policy that has been set. However, when I think of that, our role, is our role simply to, to let council know what council has decided previously? Or is our role to provide a recommendation based on our wisdom and our perspective to give council input, to help them make their decision? Because we're certainly not going to make that decision for them. So, as I consider these issues, I don't consider it our role to simply say, well, we're going to tell you what council said. I think it's our responsibility to provide some wisdom and counsel to the city council, and then allow them to stew over that and see if it's consistent with their thinking, and let them make their decision, so.
So, with that, I'd like to make a motion. I think we should recommend that the city council waive the fee for the six low-income units.
Mr. Feinstein?
So, I will defer to the commission if they, someone would like to second that. However, at this point, the way our resolution is written, it is to recommend that the council deny the request for the, or to deny the appeal. We do have alternate language that is available, that we can provide, that would do the opposite, that would recommend, that the council grant the appeal, but if we want to go down this road of recommending a partial granting of an appeal, we would need to need to recess briefly so that we could provide findings and resolution language for the commission to consider. So if that's the direction we want to go, we would request probably a 15-minute recess so we can prepare that information.
Do I have a second?
I have a question, my fellow commissioners, before I second it. I'm concerned, I think all of us who live in Escondido are concerned, that we're falling short of our goals and our needs for affordable housing. And I'm always trying to look around every corner, finding a way to encourage property owners and developers to build more affordable housing. And after seeing the numbers presented on the feasibility of the project, it concerns me whether or not future property owners would be discouraged from wanting to pursue affordable housing in Escondido. So I'm going to ask, before we go any further with the commissioner of policy, could we consider recommending to the city council that they exercising their discretionary authority on a case-by-case basis, limited only to affordable housing projects in Escondido, as opposed to wholesale projects in Escondido?
So in that case, it would be more generalizing the recommendation as opposed to being very specific to the six units?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, and I would actually agree with that. Because my thing is that this is an issue of scale, and also an issue of affordable housing, for workforce housing. The fact that it is infill, and the fact that we really are trying to promote that as a city, I think is really super important. But I also, I understand, I completely empathize with city council's policy, but I also agree that we had never had a chance to weigh in on it. But as always, the one-size-fits-all really doesn't work in this case. So I would recommend, I would support what Commissioner Barber's suggesting as well. Are there other comments before we actually make another motion? Sure.
Oh, go ahead.
Commissioner McCarroll?
I am in complete agreement with having a discretionary waiver for low-income housing as well. I don't want it to be just the six units. I want it to be the complete project. I think it's really important what these two projects on the agenda tonight are doing. As much as I love our city and want us to find ways to have the funds to, you know, carry on with development, we need to understand that cities around us are booming. They're getting these things done, and it's Escondido's time now to really look at the policies that have been made in the past and that are currently on the docket, and do our best to ensure that we get the housing that we need so desperately here, amongst other projects. I think this is a great project. I think your architect did a great job. It does not look like low-income housing, and I appreciate that. So I would be in agreement to waive for this project. Thank you.
Commissioner Wyler?
Yeah, and I like that we're having this discussion with everybody's opinion on the housing, because, you know, I agree. Jeez, you know, it's tough to get housing put in the ground, and then we have this affordable component, which is, you know, which is good, that the developer is willing to, without a mandate, provide six units that are going to be deed-restricted. You know, and I think that's good. That's a developer's choice to enact that. I don't, and because, and I agree with Commissioner Paul, that maybe we should eliminate having the CFD be attached to the affordable units. You know, I agree with that, too. I think what we really need to have is maybe an overreaching or a wider recommendation to city council, that they really take a new look at the impacts of the CFD in light of trying to get, or try not to overburden the costs that are being placed on developers via the CFD. And under consideration would be, if a developer does provide affordable housing, that maybe that fee is reduced, and if it's reduced to zero, you know, great, or something less than, I think that that would be something good. I don't know if we're in a position right now to actually say, eliminate it entirely, but to at least recommend that the city take another hard look at the CFD and make sure that, you know, it is meeting state law, because it sounds like that's the contention that BIA is saying, that, you know, we didn't, the city or the preparer, the CFD, didn't cover all their bases. And maybe that's actually true. You know, I don't know. That's up to staff and the people that prepared the CFD to justify where it went. So, you know, in that, what Commissioner Spear said, which is, should we provide them with our wisdom? Sure. I think that that's a good idea. So I think that's why we have this discussion. So, you know, there's my added comment to this based on our discussion with the other council or commissioners.
Commissioner Spear?
I like this discussion. I'm trying to figure out, and it's, I guess, somewhat of a question, and rambling in my mind, but where do we go from here in terms of our duty tonight? And what I'm sort of gathering is that we have two things we're trying to do. One is to answer the question at hand, and the other is to provide some form of recommendation that's general. I mean, we're hearing a couple of different ideas. I don't think tonight is necessarily the forum to get very specific about what those ideas may be, but I think a more general recommendation of the nature of what we've talked about might be as a part two to what we present to council. One is a response directly to the question at hand, and the other, a general recommendation. That would be my suggestion. Maybe we can discuss what that recommendation would be. I don't know if it's now or later, but that's my thought.
No, I would recommend that we actually come up with a, as you said, part one, part two. We can do part one. Are we, address the specific question we recommend to council, yes or no, that we support the appellant, or we, or some variation on that theme? And then part two, that we recommend to council that the city actually take another look at the CFD and think about scale, and think about affordable housing, and the importance of saying.
So if, through the chair, if I may, want to clarify a couple things. First, I do want to make sure that everyone is aware that we are not requiring an applicant to enter into a CFD. We've made that available as an option to achieve the requirement to pay for the cost of ongoing public services. I just want to make sure that that's 100% clear. That said, the fee or the condition that's on the project that's been appealed is specific to what staff's understanding and knowledge of council's policy is. What we're looking for from the commission is whether they believe that that is the appropriate call, right? If you believe that there's something different, if you think, like you've been talking about, that maybe you recommend that they waive the requirement and thus grant the appeal, or maybe you recommend that it's granted on part of this or whatnot. That's your purview to make that recommendation. I would like to ask, though, first, I do believe there still is a motion on the floor, so I think we'll have to figure out where things are with that. But whenever we get to the point of understanding what the recommendation is going to be, or what the motion will be, unless it's what is specifically in the resolution that's been presented, I would request that you make a motion, or you identify what the request would be for a motion, and then we can recess so that we can draft language to provide in front of you guys. So that would be what I'd like to just put out there, so.
My only comment would be, I'm actually, despite what you have heard about my position is, I'm actually on board with Commissioner Wyler, that we need to consider what the current city council policy is and their expectations. So I may have trouble specifically singling out this project tonight to be exempt, as the city council now doesn't currently have a discretionary policy on a case-by-case basis on affordable housing. I personally prefer the general question being brought to them, and then they debate that, and then they decide whether or not to grant the exemption.
So that would be a different motion, then?
Yes.
Right. I think I'm hearing from Adam that we either grant it or we don't, and if we want to do something in the middle, we need to take a recess, whether it's my proposal or...
Once we clarify what then?
Yes, you have to clarify that first, and then we'll take the recess so staff can draft the language.
So you need a clear recommendation so that you can draft the language, and then we'll take a break at that point. Okay, so you had a motion on the floor? Now you could restate it?
Right. My motion is that we grant the waiver, but we recommend to the city council they grant the waiver, but only for the six low-income units. But I'm not here in a second.
Is there a second to that? No? Okay. Is there another motion? Commissioner Barber, you had one?
I would make a motion to recommend to the city council that they develop a policy or standard to use their discretionary authority to, on a case-by-case basis, allow exemptions to be, CFD applied only to affordable housing projects. Did I word that to your satisfaction? Or would you like me to take another crack at it?
Let's see if there's endorsement of that.
You know, I would argue that that's already the city council's position. That's 100% what the city council does, already.
They already have that discretionary authority.
Yeah, they already have that discretionary authority, therefore, we would be recommending that they do what they would do anyway.
And if I could, would just add that any motion should really be directed to the project and to the request before you regarding the appeal of this condition. While I completely, again, I think the same as everyone, understand where this discussion is and feel it's a wonderful discussion to be had by the planning commission, the item before you is regarding this project, and obviously, the subsequent project you still have to hear, and this condition of approval, and some kind of recommendation to council, whether it's to deny the appeal, meaning that the city council policy, you recommend upholding the city council policy, or you recommend something else. But either way, we're trying to be focused on this project to allow them to move forward to city council.
Right. I think one of the issues here is we really do want the project to move forward as well.
Then I'll make a motion to grant the appellant's request for the exemption.
As part one.
What would you like part two to be?
Well, I was just thinking, going back, also, that the commission would recommend that the city take another look at the CFD structure, CFD and private financing structure, to think about scale and particular projects.
That'd be two different motions.
Yeah, that would be two different recommendations.
So, if I may, I believe that the, like Principal Planner Nicholas was saying, the issue in front of us is related to this specific project.
Oh, so we can't go beyond that at this time?
What I would say is that you've had a discussion that's really given a lot of insight into what your opinions and thoughts are on this matter. I believe that that alone, just through the course of this discussion, will shed some light through what will be, including in our city council staff reports, kind of identifying some of these issues. That'll shed some light to council on what the concerns and considerations have been here. And I would say that just by having this discussion and making a recommendation one way or another on the specific project, you've kind of given that direction or that guidance that you would look for that to be, that, kind of that discussion and policy consideration to be rehashed at some point.
That would be great, as long as staff does do that. They actually represent some of our discussion points here, which I haven't always seen to be the case. So I think that would be really important to point out. Okay, so Commissioner Barber, you put that motion on the table. Could you restate it once more, please?
My motion is to grant the appellant's request for the exemption.
Recommendation, yes. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please?
Nope, nope, nope. Hold on.
Can I just qualify that? Because the way you stated it was to grant the appeal, so let me just qualify that what you need to do is recommend to the city council that they grant the appeal, if that helps to clarify.
This is getting frustrating. So my fifth motion will to be recommend to the city council that they grant the exemption for the purpose of not risking the infeasibility of this affordable housing project.
Or the viability of the project.
Or the viability, oh, for God's sake.
We can wordsmith.
Yeah. I have a wife like you at home.
Okay. Is there a second?
And I want to, just to make sure I'm 100% clear on this. So, we are going, your motion is going against staff's recommendation. I just want to understand that that's...
What I understand would be that, Commissioner Barber, you're recommending that the city council approve the appeal, which would then allow them to...
I could not have said that better myself, apparently.
But I could hope.
Thank you.
All right. Did you have something to say, Adam?
Yeah, assuming that we have a second to that, then we do actually have draft language to this effect that we can provide. I would recommend, you know, just a quick three-minute recess, once we understand that this is the direction we're going, so we can distribute that and allow the commission to review that real briefly.
The actual language before we actually do a motion and make a roll call?
Correct, because there are findings that are tied to it that we need to make sure that you're comfortable with.
Yes. Okay. All right, so we already had, the motion was made, we had a second.
I'll second.
Right? And so do we need to do a roll call and all that? No, you want to wait, right, until we see the actual language? Okay, so I'd like to set a recess now for how long?
Five minutes is fine.
Five minutes is fine. Thank you so much. So we'll reconvene at eight, let's call it 8:50, I mean, 8:55. Okay, folks, I think we're ready to reconvene. Mr. Finestone has agreed to read the new findings, which essentially will serve as the motion, if I'm understanding it correctly, into the record.
Correct. So the motion has been made, basically, to recommend that council grant the appeal. That's what the resolution here is. So in essence, you've recommended to grant, or to adopt Resolution 2022-07, as it is noted here. It's a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Escondido, recommending that the city council grant the appeal of the standard condition of approval that requires payment for ongoing municipal services. So that approval or that resolution is based on findings identified in Exhibit B to the resolution, which reads as follows. "The Planning Commission has reviewed the record and makes the following findings for granting the appeal of the condition of approval that requires ongoing payment for municipal services. One, on September 23rd, 2020, following the multiple public hearings, the city council adopted a policy requiring all new residential development approved after May 13th, 2020, to pay their fair share for ongoing costs of providing public services, municipal services. However, the city's required regional housing needs assessment, RENA, identified a goal of an additional 9,607 units, 1,864 of which need to provide housing for very low-income individuals or families. The six deed-restricted units for very low-income households included in this project will help contribute to that goal. Additional ongoing costs would negatively impact the ability to provide these deed-restricted units. Two, removal of the condition of approval will support the city council-adopted housing element policies prompting, promoting the development of very low-income deed-restricted units to meet the city's RENA goals, and removing the funding requirement would support the development of the very low-income deed-restricted units."
So thank you, Mr. Finestone. So that is the finding and motion on the table?
That's exactly what I said.
It's exactly what you said, Commissioner Barber, no doubt. So the motion, is there, making the motion and second it, then?
And it's only via the chair, any sort of point of order, once we have made a motion, there's been a second, that's it, no more discussion, is that correct?
Would have roll call, would vote on it.
Other than roll call? So, all discussions done?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that all right? So, the motion is, as Mr. Finestone read, I second it? Roll call?
Commissioner Barbe?
Yes.
Commissioner Barber?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarroll?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Spear?
Yes.
Commissioner Wyler?
No.
The vote is 4 to 2, to approve.
Thank you. And thank you to presenters and the appellants, appreciate your taking the time to speak with us.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you so much.
Okay, so, moving on to the next public hearing, we have PL 220032, the appeal of a plot plan approval.
Yes, would you, J. Paul Senior Planner?
I'm not sure you're on.
Mic's not on.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. J. Paul Senior Planner, and welcome to the planning commissioners that are new, that I haven't met over the last several decades. I am going to be brief with this presentation here. This also is an appeal of the funding condition for a similar project about a block south of this project, on South Escondido Boulevard. It is for a 48-unit multifamily residential density bonus project that will provide five very low-income units. Located here, it's on the old County Credit Union site. This is an artist rendering of the project, and previously, as previously recommended with the previous project, staff is recommending denial of the appeal to uphold the director's decision, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. So then, the next up would be the appellant, is there a presentation, or, yes? Could you please state your name, and you have about 10 minutes or so?
Yes, yeah, thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, appreciate the time here to come speak. My name is Stephen, I work with Kier Builders. We are in escrow on the project here, we've been in escrow since July, and we are representing the applicant-appellant team here, which includes the current seller, as well. Our focus, this company is middle-income housing, our typical project sizes are, I think, from 10 to 100 units, so this is really, this project is what we specialize in, and really what our focus is. We're a small family-owned company located here in San Diego, focusing only in San Diego County, we've completed a number of projects like this around the county. As a middle-income developer, this is a really important decision for us, because of the numerous reasons that the cross-team presented, and so, you know, we're hopeful to, you know, get the same recommendation here from you. So here you see a picture of the existing condition, it is, the seller is the owner of the former chiropractor business here, and is now vacant, and we are proposing the 48 units that you see here on the right. Quick breakdown of the unit calculations with the density bonus, the, based on the lot area of the site at 46,000 feet, at 30 units an acre, we afforded, or allowed 33 units. We are proposed to provide 15% as very low income, which is five units total, allowing an additional 17 bonus units, which gets you to 50, but we are only proposing 48. And we are, with that, per density bonus law, we are afforded three incentives. We noted some fees here, because this is a financial discussion, we wanted to just highlight a couple items, which, you know, we discussed, or was discussed the last presentation, but, so when it comes to development impact fees, all of those development impact fees are paid for the market rate and the affordable units, regardless of location and size. Most on location, there are a couple smaller ones, but a one-bedroom unit oftentimes will pay the same amount as a three-bedroom unit, that could be, you know, two and a half times the size. And so, for these, you know, the previous project and our project, which is, as was noted, just down the street, these are infill, you know, projects, and, you know, with services nearby, and very little improvements that are required off-site. So, a total of 1.1, just over 1.1, development impact fees will be paid as a result of this project to the city, and then, as was noted, there are some that go to other agencies, one being the local school district, and then another being Sandag, but that's a, you know, regionally, funds do come back to Escondido. Just was also mentioned in the last presentation, property tax increase will increase, current property taxes are just over 12,000, and is estimated after construction to be around 175,000, and that will increase over time as the property value increases, and if there is a sale at some point in the future to a new owner, then those property taxes will adjust to that, the value of the project, which is always going to be an increase. So, as the project size, as the project sizes get larger, and with more units, you know, the fees are there to capture that additional area, those additional units, proportionate to the size of the project. We've developed in a number of cities here locally, National City, Vista, Ramona, Fallbrook, City San Diego, Lemon Grove, and Alcohun, and this is the first fee like this that we have seen, as was noted in the previous presentation. If I can go to the next slide? That was the end of the- Oh, that was awesome, okay. Yeah, so with that, I'll turn it over to our attorney, Tim Hutter, with Alan Mackens.
Thanks, Steve. I promised to be brief, so I will, I'm going to hope that you guys are going to go in the same theoretical direction that we saw in the last presentation, and I'll spare you all of the density bonus waivers, finding of fact, all the stuff that's in my notes. I did want to point out to Mr. Finestone, he had handed us a draft, the resolution to track the language that was in the last one, there was something that noted that this project provides five deed-restricted units instead of six, so for purposes of the proposed resolution that you'd handed to Stephen, at least the copy I have, said six, instead, so I just wanted to make sure that was right.
Appreciate that, thank you.
The other thing I would say, and this is more of a soapbox comment, so I'll make it my last, the finding as a fact that Mr. Finestone provided you, and that you adopted as part of your resolution on the last project, and I think this would apply equally to ours, our belief very strongly is that by granting the appeal, by waiving the CFD for purpose, or the, by waiving the funding requirement, which could be, take the form of CFD, or some other alternative, you are providing not only for the cost of the affordable housing, you are providing for the cost of the other housing that's coming as part of the project, right? Because part of what was discussed is, when you layer this cost onto those affordable units, there's actually no ability, and it would be illegal under state law, for these gentlemen to pass that cost onto the tenant of those affordable units, right? So, by applying it to the whole project, or by applying it to the affordable units, all you're doing is shifting that cost over to the production of the market-rate units, right? And these guys have a very similar market segment of what they're trying to hit. So, in terms of the findings that you make, I think you could even go a step further, I'm not encouraging you to make major changes, but I think you could go a step further and say, you know what, by waiving this, by granting this appeal, by waiving this funding requirement, we're providing not only for the five affordable units, we're providing and making it easier for the city to accomplish its housing goals overall, right? Not just the very low-income units that need to be accounted for as part of the RENA, but the moderate-income units, or the market-rate units that are going to be provided as well. So, that's just food for thought, I think my client would be very happy if you just made the change from six to five, and adopted the same resolution, but we do appreciate your very thoughtful consideration tonight, it's been really great to hear, and be present and listen to it, and we appreciate your time, thanks. And we're available for questions, if you guys have any-
Thank you. Commissioner Paul, questions to the appellant?
Yes, please, I do have a question. I actually, I like your project a lot more than the previous one.
Ooh!
The design is actually really nice.
Yeah.
Kudos to your architect.
And I appreciate the little play area on the side, and when I was out there, and it looks like that's going to be right up against the wall that's on that side, so I wanted to know if you considered putting some artwork or something on that wall, if maybe, you know, work out with the owner of that building? And I know the Escondido Community Foundation will, has grant money to do that, and we will pay probably, if you want to put art along the whole wall.
Okay, yeah, can't commit to that now, but we have done that on a number of projects, where we do public art and murals, so we'll definitely reach out to that organization. Thank you.
Other questions or comments for the appellant? No? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Is there oral or public comment? I think you have to read two of them into the-
Yes, we have two written comments. The first one is from Erin Bove, reads, "Dear Mayor, City Council, and Planning Commissioners, my name is Erin Bove, and I am a 20-plus commercial real estate broker in San Diego. I specialize in multifamily and multifamily development deals, and have been fortunate to close over 450 transactions in my 20 years. My company, Marcus &amp; Milichap, is the largest brokerage company in the country. I am the listing agent of the property located at 1600 South Escondido Boulevard, Escondido, California 92025, and I am thoroughly opposed to the CFD condition applied to Project PL The cost of this tax is considerably greater for multifamily development than for single-family detached development, therefore, by imposing these special taxes, the city has impaired the ability of all future housing providers to develop much-needed medium-to-high-density housing to address the state's housing crisis, and violates the stated objectives of incentivizing this very type of development. Many developers have removed Escondido in their search for new opportunities because of the CFD condition. Frankly, I worry for the City of Escondido and its ability to create new housing for as long as the CFD condition remains. Please remember, the city is in competition with other cities, and when it is more expensive to build or develop, the builders will go elsewhere. I encourage you to vote in favor of the appeal and waive the CFD condition on this project. Sincerely, Erin Bove." And the next comment is from Kamshad Rezadeh, I'm sorry. "Dear Mayor, City Council, and Planning Commissioners, my name is Kamshad Rezadeh, and I am the owner of the property located at 1600 South Escondido Boulevard, Escondido, California 92025. I am thoroughly opposed to the CFD condition applied to Project PL 22-0032. The City of Escondido has created a significant financial barrier to achieving its own clearly-identified housing objective, thus undermining the city's attempts to comply with its RENA obligations. The special tax should not be applied to infill developments, especially this development, which includes several units restricted to very low-income residents. This is simply bad policy. One class of residents will be paying twice for the same level of services enjoyed by the entire community, while existing residents will not be providing additional funds for the increasing cost of the same services that they enjoy. More than that, the market-rate residents of all CFD-conditioned projects will have to subsidize the CFD fees on behalf of their very low-income neighbors, thus increasing the market-rate tenants' cost of housing. I encourage you to vote in favor of the appeal and waive the CFD condition on this project. Sincerely, Kamshad Rezadeh, Spine Zone Equity Partners LLC."
Is there any other, are there any other speakers for this?
No, there are not.
Okay. All right, so, at this point, then, we'll close the public hearing, and have conversation amongst commissioners on this project? Commissioner Wyler?
Based on all the previous discussion that we had here, I kind of need to clarify where I come from, and my standing on housing as a whole. I'm a big proponent of housing, and whatever that it is that we can do to try and get things through the system, and try and decrease those costs, so those costs can get spread back to the end-user, which is either the buyer or the renter, yeah, I would really like to see that happen. We're, with this coming before us, we're put in a really poor spot, because we're asked to almost, you know, on the fly, here on the dais, to make a decision about whether or not to implement a fee, or not implement a fee, that's already been enacted, without having the ability, or even the time, to review how that fee came about, or how the special tax, or whatever you want to call it, how the CFD came about. I think it's dangerous for us to be making a recommendation not to implement a fee. I just think it's dangerous for this body to do that without all the background knowledge that's needed to make that determination. So I got to clarify that that's the reason for my position on voting no on the last one, you know? It's not that I disagree with giving the developers a break on what their fees may be, that's not my position at all. My position is, we don't have the information available in order to give that break. So, my feeling is that we should be making a recommendation that the city council take a new, fresh look at the CFD, to make sure it's equitable, to make sure that we don't fall on the losing side of a lawsuit, and take all of these things that, under consideration, that are being put forth, not only this body, but them, from the BIA and the applicants. I think this is outside of our purview, and I just want to clarify, that's my position. I'm a big proponent of housing. We need it, and we need a lot of it, and we need it now, so that the competition is there, which will hopefully bring down the price of the sales of the homes and the rents. People are getting killed right now, and, I mean, it's really unfortunate, and I agree with my fellow commissioners, gosh, have a break on these affordable units, you know, give them that break, and not have that placed on the developers. I agree wholeheartedly. I just, I'm just having a real tough time just saying, no, you don't make any recommendation to city council, that, no, you don't, that this fee shouldn't be applicable. It may, I think it needs to be applicable, but it may be applicable at a different rate, maybe. And that's a big maybe, because we don't know, we haven't seen the analysis. That analysis, as far as we know, may be horrible, and according to the appellants, it is, but maybe it's not. There's a reason why staff went through the effort to prepare a CFD with the assistance of a consulting firm, and got that all the way through a city council hearing. There's got to be something behind it, but this body, we don't know. That's my problem, that's my concern, so I don't want to argue that if we, you know, we say yes to the other appellant, and, you know, for consistency's sake, yeah, this body should say yes to this appellant, and say, no, you know, waive the fee, out of pure fairness, but I just, I'm not going to do that, because I can't. So I hope that clarifies people's understanding of my position. I'm a huge proponent of housing, I want it to be as inexpensive as it possibly can, and the burdens that are being placed on the development community, jeez, no wonder the costs are what they are. I see it, I see it on a daily basis, and it's disheartening sometimes, so, anyhow.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wyler, any other thoughts, comments? I think I just have one, and that is, given that these are two projects that are currently, like, on the table, and they are-
and they are, they do include affordable housing, that's why I am willing to go with a recommendation to provide the waiver, because they are here now and they're ready to roll. And if, in fact, which I would hope council would duly consider, that it's a make-or-break situation for one or both of these projects, that they would do so. I mean, that's where I'm coming from.
And I understand and respect...
I do too.
Your position. I'm not even saying I disagree with it. I think that's why I was going that roundabout way, trying to toss it back to them with a clear hint of what we want it to be. But that wasn't acceptable. So unless there's further discussion, I will make the same motion to grant the appeal.
And just to add to that, I do get where you were going, I really do. I just, I couldn't get there with the way the motion was made, which is okay, it's fine. That's why I wanted to make sure that clarification, that I make that clarification. Hopefully, the city council listens to what our comments are, because I think it's important. You know, we don't sit here and just deliberate, you know, for us. I think we deliberate so that the city council comes back, listens to what we have to say, and then we help them make that decision. And they hear everybody's opinion. That's my hope, and why, you know, I'm sometimes kind of lengthy on my opinion. So, but thank you, Commissioner Barber.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Paul?
Well, after you get a second, I'd like to make an alternate motion.
Okay. So you've made the motion to...
I made the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. We should vote on that one first.
I'd like to make an alternate motion. I believe the rules are you vote on an alternate motion first, but I'm not going to get a second anyway. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend the city council waive the CFD fees for the five low-income units. Do I have a second? No.
Okay. Okay, no second on... Go ahead, Commissioner Wyler.
Who made the motion?
He made the original.
Okay.
He's presenting an alternative motion.
Oh, got it. We don't, well, I heard a second, and so I wasn't sure how this works now.
My understanding was that, according to Mr. Paul, that an alternative motion can be proposed.
Okay, so we're still in discussion.
But there's no second.
No second yet. Got it. Okay.
No second, then we revert to the first motion, which was to...
Grant the appeal.
Right, with the same language as was used before, correct? Yes. Okay, and you seconded it?
Yes.
So now we can do the roll call, unless there's another alternative motion.
They want you to read like we did last time, correct?
Why don't you go ahead and read it for the record?
It's probably good to read it for the record.
Yes, please do.
Even though it's duplicative.
Give me one moment, let me make sure I've got the right one.
Six.
Yeah, five and six, different.
Yep, no, I was making sure I had the one that was recommending that they, that you grant the, that council grant the appeal. All right, so again, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Escondido, California, recommending that the city council grant the appeal of the standard condition of approval that requires payment for ongoing municipal services. That resolution is based on the following findings. The Planning Commission has reviewed the record and makes the following findings for granting the appeal of the conditional approval that requires ongoing payment for municipal services. One, on September 23rd, 2020, following multiple public hearings, the city council adopted a policy regarding, requiring all new residential development approved after May 13th, 2020, to pay their fair, to pay for their ongoing cost of providing municipal services. However, the city's required regional housing needs assessment, RENA, identified a goal of an additional 9,607 units, 1,864 of which need to be, need to provide housing to very low-income individuals or families. The five-deed restricted units for very low-income households included in the project will help contribute to that goal. Additionally, ongoing costs would negatively impact the ability to provide those deed-restricted units. Two, removal of the condition of approval will support the city council-adopted housing element policies, promoting the development of very low-income deed-restricted units to meet the city's RENA goals, and removing the funding requirement would support the development of very low-income deed-restricted units.
So with that, roll call, please.
Chair Barbe?
Yes.
Commissioner Barber?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarroll?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Spear?
Yes.
Commissioner Wyler?
No.
Vote is 422 to approve.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you very much to the appellants and presentation by staff. Mr. Paul, thanks. And with that, we will move on to current business. Public hearings are closed. Sorry? Yes. So the first item in our current business is a policy discussion that was put on the agenda by Commissioner Paul. Now, may I just clarify, because I wasn't here last time, and I think I've read the laws, the bylaws, but are we not supposed to discuss what he talks about?
No, now it's on the agenda, so you can now discuss it.
Thank you very much.
Discuss it, discuss it to your heart's content.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Paul?
Okay, thank you very much. So we spent the whole night here talking about affordable housing, and it's my opinion that the requirement for garages and carports needlessly increases the cost of housing. In Southern California, nine out of 10 garages are full of junk. They're not, your car is not in the garage. And I think that we should provide a mechanism to waive that requirement. Not that we don't have a requirement for parking, but that we let an applicant appeal the requirement for parking with an understanding that we're probably going to grant it, instead of that we're probably going to turn it down. I have, I have owned, over my lifetime, seven homes. I just did this math in my head the other day. Only two of those seven had garages. I still currently own three of those seven, two of which have no garage at all, and one of which is in a condo association that has a covered carport. And I have to believe that garages are not important to me personally, and that they've helped make the acquisition of real estate, for me, more affordable. And I guess I'd like to know if people have similar comments.
Commissioner McCarroll?
Took a bite at the wrong time, but... Did you know, there's a statistic that three-car garages are built more frequently than one-bedroom apartments? Seriously. So I agree. And currently, in San Diego code is one parking spot per bedroom. So we have, I work with developers that have, you know, urban projects, historical buildings that are being transformed into multifamily. So we have to skirt around that second parking spot issue by not putting a closet in the second bedroom, so we can say it's not a bedroom. Once it passes inspection, the developer will typically add the closet, and voila, we'll put a barn door on, and it's a bedroom. And that is what we have to do, instead of just addressing the fact that our parking requirements in California are ridiculous. I totally agree.
Commissioner Spear?
So, I guess I'm thinking about the discussion, and I'm wondering... I mean, there's a reason why, number one, I'm not totally clear on what's being suggested or proposed. And we're talking about killing the requirement to have a garage? Is that what we're talking about?
I'm talking about providing some mechanism for someone to legally add to their house or build something new without covered parking, instead of them doing, breaking the rules, like she just suggested. A lot, that's what people do. You know, people are living in garages that are not permitted to be living space, because they're told they have to replace the garage with another garage. And I, when they go to City Hall, they say, "Can I turn my garage into an ADU?" And the answer is, "If you provide another garage." And so then they would just walk away and they don't do it. Instead, if the staff could say, "We'd like you to provide another garage, but if you don't want to, we'll still entertain that idea." And just, right now, I'm kicking around the idea of some way around it. And depending on what kind of support I get for that idea is what that turns into, I guess.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Part of my concern about, you know, personal preferences and things of that nature are... The reason why we came up with planning requirements. It was because of history and because of mistakes and problems that we saw. You know, we had, you look at places where they just started building, 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 and then, once it's built, they look at the city and they say, "Wow, we got a mess here." You know, we got all this crowd, and we got people, you know, building all kinds of tack-ons to their property for 10 million people who live here, and there's no parking, and there's no... So I hesitate to take a armchair look at why maybe that requirement was there, the history behind it, and the wisdom behind it, and the impacts in maybe taking away something like that or trying to change it. I hesitate without... I mean, I don't know about this body being the body to say, "Hey, let's just do away with something that's been historically a wise decision for a lot of reasons that we may not know." So I'm a little hesitant. I look around, I certainly don't want our community to become... I mean, we already have, for example, you know, I look at areas that are traditionally zoned for one acre, a one-acre minimum parcel size for a house. Well, a state came in and said, "Well, we know you have that, but we're going to disregard that, and now you are required to allow someone to divide that in half at will, and then put two property, or two houses on each of those halves." So we take what used to be, for some reason, we said, you know, we like the idea in our community of having certain residences that are spread out. You don't have four homes in an acre, you have one. And that provides what we, as a community, decided on as a nice feature, a nice part of our community. And you take state mandates that are one-size-fit-all, and they say, "Well, we don't care what you locally want." Anybody in the state of California now can bust a property into four houses now. So I worry about all different pushes and directions where people say, "Well, we just want to make it easier to stack a whole bunch of people onto one property, and we want to get around these, you know, all these difficulties that are imposed on that." Well, there's a reason for some of those difficulties. There's longstanding wisdom in saying, "We're going to put some high standards on our community, because the end result is going to be really nice." We're not going to have 10 million families living on one property with no garages, no off-site parking. We got people stacking, I mean, you can go down to different parts of San Diego, and you can see the parking problems they have with people, you know, you go to coastal communities where you can't find a place to park. You come home from work, and if you came home too late, you're out of luck. There's no parking. It's all street parking, right? Here in Escondido, we have a little bit different situation. We have off-site parking, people tend to have garages, it's a different community. So I'm a little hesitant when we start saying, "Let's zap," and make it really easy to dismiss standards that we've had in the past.
Commissioner Barber?
Yeah, Commissioner Paul, but if I'm understanding, your discussion is you would limit it to specific cases, such as whether a garage is converted into additional living space? Whether they should, and/or, I recall you bringing this issue up, and we were talking about the second dwelling units, whether or not a carport should be required.
Yeah, that an applicant could make their case, so to speak, and say, "In my situation, you know, I have room on my property for vehicles, but I don't want to replace the garage, or I don't want to build a new garage." Because, I mean, we see garages with the cars parked outside of them. And we know that the cars are not in the garages anyway. So I'm just thinking, instead of just telling the person, "No," that we provide some other alternate method that they can appeal that rule.
Well, in limited situations, I could appreciate your point and support your point.
I guess for me, I'd have to have some historical perspective from the city as to why it is the way it is. Because I think we've heard bits and pieces of that, and I completely see your point. But I guess, similar to what Commissioner Spear says, I think I'd want to have a lot more context before, you know, making any proposal or idea. Mr., yeah, do you have any brief perspective?
Yeah, so generally, I think everyone is aware that two-car garages are kind of the standard for what you see in single-family homes and single-family neighborhoods. I think that kind of grew out of the, you know, the American dream with the white picket fence and 2.5 kids and the dog in the yard and, you know, the two cars parked in the garage. And now it's all the junk stored in the garage and two cars parked in the driveway in front of it, right? The, there's, I don't know the specific reasons why our code states two-car garage, or two-covered spaces, I should say, for a single-family home, and why it requires one covered space for each unit minimum in a multifamily project. Those are standards that I think you see in many jurisdictions, at least in the kind of suburban Southern California area. Excuse me. So, you know, one thing I will also say is that, I mentioned a couple months ago, I think that we are, we do have funding that's been allocated through, I think it's one of our LEAP grant, to do a parking study for the downtown area. And generally, I think we would be looking to potentially expand the scope of that to identify what are best practices in the parking industry these days for residential development. I think that the intent is really to look, the intent of that study is really to look at the multifamily and mixed-use commercial ideas, but I think, you know, it's not that much of a stretch to add a little bit of analysis of what best practices are for single-family residential designations and homes as well. So it's nothing that we're jumping on immediately. We've got, I think, the grant gives us until the end of 2024 to do, to take care of everything, get this study done. I know it's on our work plan, but considering current workload, staffing levels, and I will let you know also, Sean Nicholas is going to be departing, so we'll be losing him as well. It's not on our agenda in the next couple months, I'll say that. But it's something that is, that we do have programmed, and we can look at that ability to consider, or at least to analyze, what those best practices are elsewhere for single-family and multifamily homes. One thing I do have to just also clarify for the record is that we do not require replacement parking if someone builds an ADU in their garage. So someone can come in and request to convert their garage into an ADU, and yep, you know, we cannot require that they provide parking elsewhere on site. Typically, you're going to have your driveway in front of it, and you can park there, and that qualifies as a parking space, even though it's not covered, but it's not a required parking space at that point.
I was going to say, because I thought we heard from the ADU discussion of several meetings ago, that parking, a parking space was required for an ADU.
So I've got it here, and...
I don't know about covered or any, you know, sort of conditionality there, but...
So, let's see. "Notwithstanding any other law, the city will not impose parking standards for accessory dwelling unit or junior accessory dwelling units."
Huh.
So, I mean, it seems pretty black and white there. It could have been a discussion of...
It may have been a particular case or something.
Yeah.
Was the parking adjacent or not, and what's the difference?
Oh, was, this was regarding SB 9.
Yeah, in the context of SB 9, there was a discussion.
Yeah, so that's a different, different law and different statute and requirements, limitations, et cetera.
Right, thank you.
Adam, don't we have a condition if you're a half-mile within transit, the parking requirement is less...
Carrie, could you speak into the...
If your project is within a half-mile of transit, you get a reduced...
Yeah, so for... Yeah, so for, for ADUs, the law used to be, half-mile of transit, you don't have to provide parking. Our code basically says, well, if you're converting a gar, garage or carport, or if you're just building an ADU, you don't require parking. I think that, that state law really encourages that, and I think that the way also that, that statute reads is, it's within re, a half-mile of a transit stop, so most of the areas where you're gonna have these garage conversions are gonna be in areas that you're probably gonna be within half a mile of a transit stop. Difference between that and, say, SB nine, is that that requires, that has limitations regarding parking if you're within half-mile of a high-quality transit, transit stop, which is, has a certain amount of lead time and, and quantity of, of, you know, timing of stops. The only area in the city that qualifies for that at this point is the transit center. So that's the difference where, where at this point, you know, single-family homes near a bus stop, within half a mile of a bus stop, they, they per statute don't require parking. We just kind of said, you know, if you're converting your garage, you probably have a parking space in front of it already, anyway. In fact, you really do, because how else, you know, there, there's a setback requirement, so that a car is not sticking out into the street if they're parked in front of their garage already. So I kind, I think by default and de facto, you do have an uncovered space in front of your garage. A lot of jurisdictions, actually, for, let's say, a single-family home, require two covered and two uncovered spaces, so the two covered spaces in a garage, or a carport, and then you've got your two guest spaces, or uncovered spaces in the driveway in front of it. So, while we don't formally state that, de facto, that's really what we have in our code as well, right? So, but yeah, no parking required for ADUs.
Commissioner Wyler, you had something to, I apologize, 'cause I interrupted.
Yeah, well, you know what, and I understand, you know, Commissioner Paul, where you're coming from here, and, but Commissioner Spear brings up something really important, which is, yeah, we kind of try and learn from our mistakes. Knowing developers, the way I've had to deal with them, boy, if it's not required, they're not gonna provide it, more times than not. You'll, you'll get some good developers and go, you know what, it's a quality-of-life thing. You know what, I want the carports, it's, it's good for my, my apartment complex, or I want the garage, why? Because it's good for that community. But you'll get a lot that won't do it, and, and what does that end up looking like? And, you know, I, I would bet that if we go through certain neighborhoods through the city, where there are old, old communities, one-car garage, probably converted into living area, go down the street, there are cars everywhere. I mean, they're on the dry, or they're, they're on, in, in, in the yard in front, they're all up and down the street, and yeah, you know, you come home late at night, then where do you park? So, I, I, I mean, I, I truly get what you're saying, which is, why add to the cost of a, of a development by providing this stuff? Well, if you don't, developers more likely than not won't provide it, and, and it may be, well, he saved a buck, and it's cheaper to live there. It's up to you if you live there or not, I mean, you, you know, you have a choice to live in, in the home with the two-car garage, or the one with no garage. Yeah, it's our choice, which is fine. I, I, it, it's a tough thing, it truly is, you know?
You know, I, I just wanna have one comment about the, about the, the, the streets are full of cars. So, in Eureka Springs is all HOAs with, with pretty good-sized lots, and they don't, they don't let you park overnight in the streets. I mean, the neighborhood is immaculate. But at the same time that, that neighborhood went in, there was a few small, little streets built at the same time, and so there's an entrance that I, I go in, when I go into Eureka Springs, all the time I go down this road, I can't think of the neighborhood, maybe it's Key Lime, or something like that, and it's on the way into Eureka Springs. And, and so they're locked on quite as big, and we, there is no street parking available. There, everybody is, that street is just packed full on both sides of the street with cars, and those are all brand-new houses with, with garages, and there's, there's no cars in any of those garages. And the difference is, the HOA, or not an HOA, and, and whether they had to pay the Melrose's for, for Eureka Springs, that people could afford to, those Melrose's, they don't park in the street. So that is really an affordability issue, and, and those are all brand-new houses with, with two-car garages, and, and nobody, and nobody parks in them, and, and you're right, it's affordability, they've chosen to spend their money on their toys that are in the garage, and, and stuff like that. But it, but it, but having the garage didn't solve the problem of people parking in the streets. People did that, people did that anyway. But, but I think I'm hearing staff is, is amenable to thinking about that when you do the parking, when you're reviewing the parking next year.
Yeah, you know, as part of that parking study, it, it sounds, well, let me back up, it sounds like this discussion is really being tied to single-family home garage, you know, covered parking requirements for single-family homes. I think that we are, we would already definitely be analyzing requirements for multifamily, because that's more, more of what the intent of the scope of the study would be, multifamily, mixed-use commercial, downtown, that kind of, those kinds of developments. But if there's a desire, if I'm hearing correctly, that the intent is to kind of consider single-family as well, we can look to get that into the, into the RFP.
Yeah, I, I think the issue with, with the multifamily is always more, is there space? How many spaces are there? Is there no, but, but with the single-family homes, there's generally plenty of space, but we still require garages anyway.
So, are you on the same page with respect to...
Are you, am I?
Additional elements being added to...
Yeah, I, I'm okay with the discussion, I, I think that, I wanted to have a discussion about it, see if other people had similar, similar feelings, and...
I'm good.
If I could ask a question, if a project comes in through the planned development permit, could the garage requirement be waived?
It could. Plan development permits, or plan developments are allowed to prepare and provide their own development standards, so that is potentially an option.
So it almost seems like there might be a mechanism already available in the current code, if, if a developer actually goes, look, I'm trying to save a buck here, I'm trying to make these more affordable.
Right, you know, and I thought that's probably the case, but, but staff, but staff and most people wouldn't say, yeah, you know, you don't need to do that. You know, they would think, no, hey, where's the garage?
I, I do agree that I think we'd be surprised to ever see a submittal for a residential subdivision for single-family homes that didn't have garages.
Well, yeah, who wants to buy into that? But if you, I don't know, if, what's the cost of a garage? I don't know, twenty grand, let's say? Extra cost on a house, I mean...
Probably less expensive than actually making it a room, or something, so...
Yeah.
I, I got a quote for a garage, and you guys would be scared, what I told, you know, because now they tell you that, you know, it's gonna be sheet-rocked and finished inside and everything, because they don't, they don't just build garages anymore.
Yeah.
So, they're gonna, they're gonna insulate it, they're gonna put inside walls on it, they're gonna spackle them, and, you know, paint them, et cetera, too.
All right, so I think that brings that agenda item to a conclusion, unless there's other, other comments? Okay. Yeah. Okay, so the next future agenda items, I think based on this last conversation, I had a few sidebar conversations with other commissioners, we're wondering what we'd like to do is put it on the agenda to at least get some sort of education about the CFDs, what the services are included, maybe we could, if, if folks are willing to, to give a little bit more specifics as to what exactly we'd like staff to do. Again, Adam, I don't know if it's possible to ask you, 'cause I understand this is not in our work plan necessarily, et cetera, et cetera, but perhaps at least an overview would be feasible, in terms of what are the, what is generally considered as, you know, part of a CFD, what are the municipal services, et cetera, and costs?
Yeah, I can speak with the engineering director, or city engineer, and get some, some input from her, and probably there, there probably is kind of a white paper that came out of the fiscal impact analyses that were done, that we could, we could provide and go through that. I don't know potentially what the availability of that, of our city engineer, or potentially one of the management analysts in that department would be, but hypothetically, they could provide a little bit of primer as well.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful to us. Any other comments about that?
How would we find out what other cities do as well, like Vista, or San Marcos, or, you know, our neighboring towns? If we wanted to educate ourselves on the fees that they charge, just to be well-informed, where do we look for that?
So, when we did our, well, let me, let me kind of back up real quick, if we are gonna put this onto a future agenda, we do need a second individual that would be interested.
Right, right.
Second.
We have a second.
And we're, and we're not supposed to engage in the discussion of it.
Okay.
But I think just answering an, an item, as far as where can you find information, other cities post their fees on their websites. When we do fee studies, and we do impact fee updates, we include analysis of other cities, other jurisdictions as part of that, so those numbers are out there. When we get to a point, when we bring something back to you, we can look at and kind of give you a little more detail on that.
Awesome. Is that, is that suffice? Yeah? Is that good for everybody? All right, thank you very much. Any other future agenda items that folks want to see on? No, not at this time. Any other oral communications? No, not at this time. So any general comments from planning commissioners, thoughts? First, I would just like to say thank you to Commissioner Paul for facilitating the last meeting, and also to let you all know that I won't be here for the next three, unfortunately, due to family weddings and birthday celebrations and requirements for me to be elsewhere, so Commissioner Paul has, will be holding the gavel for the next three, three meetings or so. I would like to make one comment about the gateway area for Escondido, where these projects are located, et cetera, and I just, and Adam, I talked about this before, but I'm really concerned about green space, public green space availability. All of these projects are going up, and when you drive around that area, you just don't see much public green space for citizens to recreate, or to hang out, et cetera. So it's just a, a real sort of bee in my bonnet, that I don't think requires an agenda item, it's just a over, a comment for the general cause.
Helps reduce those heat islands.
Excuse me?
Reduce those heat.
Yes, exactly. I mean, shade, et cetera, green infrastructure, and I know there's, the city's working on that, but I'm just thinking specifically of that region, given that it's called the gateway to Escondido, it's not much of a gateway if you have no green.
Remember, this is not an agendized item, so...
No, no, I know.
But I understand what you're...
It's just a comment, it's just a comment. Anything else from the planning commissioners? Nope? Adam?
Sure, so, thank you for all your deliberation tonight, that was very enlightening, and I think there was a lot to be gained from the discussions, a lot of insight into different ideas, thoughts, opinions, et cetera, and it'll be something that we will relay to the city council as part of the staff report, or reports to them into, for their item, for their consideration of these items in two weeks. We do have a meeting scheduled for next, or for two weeks from today. There's one item that has been agendized already, that's a public hearing for consideration of a Dutch Brothers coffee on Center City and Washington, I believe. I don't know that there's anything else yet on that agenda, there won't be any other public hearing items, 'cause those, that deadline is posted, but they're, or passed, but there may be a current business item of sorts, I'm not sure at this point, but we will be meeting in two weeks.
Great, all right, thank you very much, everyone, the meeting's adjourned.